Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 27th, 2022 Committee of the Hold the Order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpat.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McBenhaman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanhour.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve the December 13th, 2022 Committee of Minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. There is a presentation, I understand.
There is? Yes.
Mr. Chair, real quick, is the sound out?
It is out.
The... It's out. You can't hear me?
Nope.
No sound on 18. We'll come down soon.
Some people might think it's a blessing if they can't hear me, so I just wanted to make sure.
Josh, why don't you hold up for a minute till we can get the sound back up? We'll just take a few-minute break until we get the sound back up if we can.
Is it back on? Not on our microphones.
But just not in here?
It's got it just now on TV, so I think we're back.
Yes, we're on.
Are we back? Yep.
Yep.
Josh, please.
Good evening, everybody.
State your name and...
Hi, everyone. I'm Josh Sabo. I'm the coordinator of the Heartland Continuum of Care. And tonight, Mayor Langford and I have talked about this, but tonight, we don't plan to make a full presentation on the strategic plan. We'll be back next week when more of the partners are in town and able to be a part of that as well. But we did want to make sure you had that. I know we were grateful for all of you to give us time to walk through that back in the fall, and we look forward to sharing some updates, but also some of the immediate action steps in 2023. But with that, happy to just answer any questions that flow from that ahead of next week's presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Next, we have ordinances tabled to remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances? Is there anyone who'd like to remove any of these ordinances from the committee?
No, sir.
If not, okay. We'll now move to ordinances for committee consideration.
CWLP, 2022-547. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing proposal UW 23-29 powered activated carbon for a one-year term with Norret Americas Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $418,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained a motion. Consent?
Second.
It's been moved to second. We send 2022-547 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda. Hearing not any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-548. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-75 Quick Lime for a two-year term with Mississippi Lime Company in an amount not to exceed $2,739,060 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained a motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Send 2022-548 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-549. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-77 and Hyndra's ammonia for a one-year term with Tanner Industries Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $52,905.60 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained a motion.
Second.
Been moved, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-549 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-550. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-78 Feric Sulfate for a one-year term with Kimara Water Solutions Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $429,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-550 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-551. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-79 Florosilic Acid for a one-year term with Univar Solutions USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $61,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Send 2022-551 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-552. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-80 Cantonic Polymer for a one-year term with Caris LLC in an amount not to exceed $168,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained a motion.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-552 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-553. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 23-11-81 Filter and Sand Anthracite Media, media removal with Carbonate Fillet LLC in a carbon-activated corporation in a total maximum amount not to exceed $83,295.40 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Been moved to second. We send 2022-553 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-554. An ordinance authorizing payment of the North American Electric Reliability Corporation, NERC, fees for fiscal year 2024 in an amount not to exceed $66,371 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Entertained a motion.
Move for consent.
Second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-554 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-555. An ordinance approving payment to Tremble Incorporated doing business as Tremble Navigation Limited in an amount not to exceed $150,837.40 for the annual software maintenance and related services for a one-year term for the outage management systems for the Office of Public Utilities.
Motion for consent.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-555 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Public Works, 2022-556. An ordinance amending Chapter 95, Section 95.600 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to prohibit the construction of new potable water supplies within designated boundaries in the area bounded by the West Line of Bengal Subdivision, the Norfolk and Southern Railroad Line, the west side of 19th Street, several lots south of North Grand Avenue, west of Indiana Street, and North Grand Avenue to the west line of Bengal Subdivision.
Entertained a motion.
Motion for consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-556 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion.
Can someone...
Alderman Hanhour.
Could someone explain what the deal is with this? Is it, I assume, whether we don't want wells drilled or use of wells that is already there? What, and how many wells do we already have?
The city from... Designate certain areas that wells are not allowed based on certain findings, and this is in conjunction with EPA.
Okay, so the wells must be contaminated or something?
No, there was a leaking underground storage tank at the Circle K. And so, in order to close out the Lust case, basically, we need to expand our groundwater ordinance. All of the houses and residences and commercial developments have water through CWLP.
Right.
So it doesn't hurt us anything, just expand the groundwater ordinance in order for them to get closure.
Do we have, I guess the question is, is this something we should do for the whole city proper? I mean, do we don't, do we still have any houses within the city that there are own wells?
I couldn't answer that. That would be a CWLP question.
I think ordinarily, right now, I think our subdivision, our building code and so on requires city water and piping. I'm not sure if there are any existing groundwater wells within the corporate limits of the city.
Right.
But we could certainly, Director is correct, that's really a CWOP question, but we can ask the Water Department that question.
I just was thinking, if we could, if that's the case, we incorporate the whole city in this, and it takes care of everybody, takes care of everything instead of one area. But I mean, I understand why. I just, especially with any type of groundwater.
There are none existing there now. This is just to designate it in order to address the EPA question.
Okay. Thank you.
And we do them every three years, I would say. It's not very, it's not very often.
We have a whole area, there's a map that we're basically identifying areas where no, basically no groundwater wells are allowed.
Yeah.
Any further discussion, Alderman Connelly? Okay.
No, need to answer my question.
Further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-557. An ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW 23-10-74 with Greener Tree LLC for the removal of 45 trees at Oak Ridge Cemetery in an amount not to exceed $71,820 for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second. We send 2022-557 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Alderman DeCenso.
Yes, where are these trees being removed? We just heard from the Urban Forestry Commission last week about the need for trees, and we're going to take all these trees out. These are oak.
Because they're dead.
Oh, they're dead. Okay.
Okay.
We'll take that. That's a good reason. Thanks, Director.
But they're in a Simmons area.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman. Chairman.
Oh, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for an omnibus vote for agenda items number 2022-558 through 566.
Removing 560.
Been moved to second. We make an ominous vote between 2022-558 and 566. Discussion. Alderman Connelly.
Yeah, I thought we got an email today that 560 was not moving forward.
I didn't hear you.
I thought we had an email today that the person in 560 had removed his name. I, sorry, I'm trying to remember.
Is that correct? Mayor, I see you shaking. Should we make, should we make a motion to remove that or withdraw that ordinance?
I would move that we withdraw 560.
Second.
So the motion's going to be for an ominous vote of 558 through 566 with the removal ordinance 560.
Yes, sir.
Discussion. Alderman Gregory.
Yes, more so of a point, I'm happy to vote for these Historic Sites Commission representatives. I just, I'm kind of curious exactly what they, what they are doing, what you guys do, because I'm interested in, as my ward has approximately nine or 10 historic sites in it, as well as some across the tracks. And I'm really interested in working with the group on how to expand tourism to those sites, as well as finding different funding if that is in your realm. But I just wanted to speak on that while we're here. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If there's anyone here that's up for these commissions or boards, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Come to the microphone.
Please come to the microphone.
On up, Bertie. You know the way.
Please introduce yourself and tell us what the committee you're up for.
Stephanie Doe. I am on the Historical Sites Commission.
Okay.
Committee member.
David L. Finnegan to be newly appointed to the Historic Sites Commission.
I'm Sullen Funk. I'm also newly appointed to the Historic Sites Commission.
And Ernie Slowtag also Historic Sites Commission.
Any questions from anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the omnibus vote? If not, entertain, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the debate agenda on an omnibus vote.
Second.
It's been moved to second to put the ominous vote on for the debate agenda. And there's been a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chair, on removal of 560, you haven't taken a vote yet.
I thought we made that in the motion.
You made the motion.
I seconded it.
Yes, but you haven't taken a vote on it.
So the motion is to remove 2022-560. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you. 2022-558. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Azel Ramirez to the Community Relations Commission. An ordinance approving 2022-559. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Pierre Ro Tachio to the Community Relations Commission. 2022-561. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Craig Colbrook to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2022-562. An ordinance approving the appointment of David Finnegan to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2022-563. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Ernie Slowtag to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2022-564. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Peggy Gant to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2022-565. An ordinance approving the reappointment of Stephanie Doe to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2022-566. An ordinance approving the appointment of Sullen Funk to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission.
Just for reconfirm, this is on the debate agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-567. An ordinance to increase the number of class C liquor licenses by one for Brandy's Place LLC doing business as Brandy's Place located at 723 North Grand Avenue.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Been moved to second. Send 2022-567 on the council due pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-568. A resolution stating the city's intent to designate a portion of the city of Springfield as tax instrument financing redevelopment project area to induce development interest with such area known as 301 North Fifth Street, parcel numbers 14-27.0-352-018 and 14-27.0-352-017.
Entertained a motion.
Motion for debate.
Second.
Been moved to second. We send 2022-568 on the council due pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Alderman Connelly.
Yeah, could we have someone please explain this part of the TIF? Is this, is this the same thing with the existing apartments?
Yes, just very briefly. This, the city's required to do a resolution, it's like the first step in the process. And this is for the Adirondack, those two parcels where Adirondack is.
Right. I'm just wondering, why is the address different? I thought the address for the other project was not Fifth Street. I thought it was actually on Madison.
It's the corner of. I believe it's the corner. We'll double check.
They are in the corner. I just wanted to make sure. And I'm sorry, I just had it on my mind as the east-west cross street, not north-south.
I think we referred to it as Madison, but the street address may be on, actually on Fifth Street.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah. We'll double check that. The parcels would refer to the actual legal pieces.
And I thought those looked somewhat close. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just recall that the TIF Act says that the, in order to designate a TIF area, it needs to be an acre and a half. I would just ask if we could make sure that those two parcels are indeed an acre and a half, and if they're not, we may do, may need to add a parcel?
Yes, I believe my memory is, and we'll double check that, I believe that it's of 1.7 acres. And I think that they are looking at, PGAV is looking at the next adjoining small piece, but that'll be part of the normal. When they come back, they'll make a recommendation.
Just thought I'd ask now rather than at the 11th hour.
And you're exactly correct. It has to be a minimum of 1.5 acres.
Thank you.
And it's slightly over that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess my question would be for Alderwoman Purchase. Along with this, have you, have you spoken to the developer about any minority requirements or the things that we talked about last week?
Not since last week, but we will be getting together after the first of the year.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-569. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative agreement between the City of Springfield Office of Public Utilities and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 193 Engineers for the time period covering June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2027.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been moved to second. We send 2022-569 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-570. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a tentative four-year agreement between the City of Springfield Office of Public Works, engineer technicians, and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters, chauffeurs, warehousemen, and helpers of American Local 916 from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2026.
Motion for consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second. We send 2022-570 on the council due pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-571. An ordinance authorizing the execution of a five-year tentative agreement with the Labor's International Union of North America Local 477 from October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2027.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Been moved to second. We send 2022-571 on the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
2022-572. An ordinance authorizing Amendment Number Two to the Community Development Block Grant CBGB Subreparient Agreement Number 20-SR-0002 to provide funds to assist the Salvation Army in operating a safety net shelter from January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, and authorizing payment for the Salvation Army in an amount not to exceed $402,934.64 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for debate.
It's been moved to second. We send 2022-572 on the council due pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Alderman McBenhaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Major Eddy, who has been our point of contact for the last couple of years on this, he happened to come to a downtown civic service club to speak last week, and I was there to hear him speak. And he gave a really good overview of their challenges. He also mentioned that hopefully, that before this contract is complete here, this contract that we're going to vote on goes through December 31, 2023. But he's hoping that the Helping Hands Shelter at, on Dirksen, that was formerly the juvenile detention center, will be up and running, so this contract might not need to go as long as it's potentially scheduled for now. He, you know, he, we're aware that Salvation Army, they really deserve so much commendation for taking the hardest to handle of those that need shelter, because the Salvation Army shelter takes in all those that may be rejected by other shelters or thrown out of other shelters. This is a low-barrier shelter. They take the toughest of the tough. And no one else wanted to take this on, as I understand it, but they were willing to take it on, and that's to their credit. They've been sending us monthly reports to every alderman of their activity. These monthly reports really go into the details of the kinds of services that they've been offering, and they break down their monthly report into their shelter services, services which are the nighttime services, and they break it down by the number of people served, their gender, the age breakdown, the ethnicity, the previous living situations. It's a great amount of detail that has to be captured whenever an individual comes into the center. So it's to their credit that they're really, really trying to gather information that'll be helpful going forward. And then they capture how many evening meals they pass out, and some of these meals are via the meal train, which is private persons and organizations providing the meals that are delivered, and then how many meals then as a backup the Salvation Army provides. Then they break it down into day services and, and by, you know, again, the day services are when people are there during the day and they need services, as opposed to the nighttime shelter. And in the 12-month report, which I think is on everyone's desk here tonight, they've got a breakdown of how many IDs were issued, how many social security cards obtained, birth certificates obtained, clothing provided, how much housing, case management, miscellaneous case management for certain types of situations like anger management, employment, treatment, how many showers they provide during the daytime. And in the most recent monthly reports, we don't show showers indicated. Why? Because the portion of the Salvation Army building structure that had to be taken down for railroad relocation included the shower facility, so they couldn't give showers the last two months, as I understand it. They talk about transportation. For the 12-month period, they provided 4,031 transportation trips. Those aren't where you pass out a ticket so they can get on public mass transportation. These are where the Salvation Army vans transport individuals to where they need to go to take care of their issues and to get help. They passed out 70 hygiene kits. They passed out, they did healthcare referrals, they did advocacy, gave items of clothing and so forth. Now, the 12-month report that's on our desk doesn't go into some of the details that some of the monthly reports go into. Like, I'm just going to read you from March of 2022. Hair care, I guess that's a haircut, 15 times. Rehab intervention, two. COVID tests, this was back in March for one month, 418 COVID tests they did at Salvation Army. Medical care during that month, eight. Overdose interventions, four. That's, I guess, where they're getting a needle so someone can come down from an overdose so they don't die. Agency referrals. So that's kind of the activity that Salvation Army has been providing the last 12 months. They deserve a lot of credit for taking on the toughest cases. And I hope Major Eddy can be here next week, where I'd like to personally thank him for taking on this difficult work. And we're now moving into even a better plan of treatment potentially at the former juvenile center on Dirksen with the type of umbrella approach that Josh Sabo has been working with the type of umbrella approach that Josh Sable has been working on for the last, I think it's over a year now that they've been working on that. And we're going to get a report on that next week. But in the meanwhile, we can't forget all that Salvation Army did. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. I echo those comments. Not only have they done a good job with this facility, but they also have another facility that the city helped them out with some years ago, before I was alderman, that really splits me and Alderman Williams Ward. And, you know, alongside from that, they're taking care of people over there. Thousands of kids utilize their facilities. I just read how they were on site to help our firefighters. And I have to be honest with you. I, you know, I told the mayor and I told Captain Eddie, you know, they stepped in to do some, you know, some tough work. I've been over there. The workers are over there working for, I think, fifteen bucks. It's hard to get people to work over there in that environment. But the people there are committed, and they've been there for a while. And, you know, whenever we come up to this winter warming shelter situation, you know, there's always some questions and, you know, it doesn't make me feel good as far as what they're doing, you know, in our community and for us. And I told them, you know, if I was them, if I ran the Salvation Army, I wouldn't have anything to do with the winter warming shelter. The way that they get questions and they're working hard. And I just would be like, Mayor, I know that you're trying to do it for him for a long bit of history, but I would just back away from it. Because they deserve a thank you, they deserve a lot for our community. We just heard about a building that, and it's not in my ward, it's right across street from my ward that burned down in Keisha's Ward, Alderman Purchase Ward. And we had talked about that building before and us needing to do something with it. And so when it burned down, you know, of course, everybody's worried about people that's dying or in that building. There was many, many people in that building. And, you know, let's talk to people who still don't want to go to our winter warming shelter, who still don't want to go see good shelter. You know, it's troublesome. And I see that every day in our community, man. And, you know, so when I see groups like this from my community who have a building over there that the community wanted, and, you know, we went through a lot, and now that it's there, it's been such a great asset. And I just don't want the workers and the people who are involved with the Salvation Army to lose an appetite for what they're doing in the community. Off what we do up here, that really has nothing to do with them. So I just wanted to speak on that. Thank you.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Alderman Gregory. I did have a conversation with him about just asking for them to come either quarterly or twice a year, because I don't think any of us have a problem with passing this, but just for transparency purposes, explaining what's going on there. I've personally went and sat there in the middle of the night and helped with check-in, so I know what goes on there. It's disheartening sometimes to see what's going on, but they take a lot of time out to have patience to deal with some of these individuals that come into the shelter. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Is there unfinished business for the committee? Alderman Hanauer.
Damn, you hit it twice.
I hit it too many times. So I don't know if this is new business, unfinished. To me, it's all, it all deals with what we were just speaking about. First and foremost, I want to thank the fire department and all the firefighters that were part of that, putting out that goodwill building. And thank God we didn't have deaths and major injuries from our, well, deaths from both sides, from homeless or the firefighters, and, or major injuries from our firefighters as well. I'm concerned, and one of the things that first came up is we've got these homeless advocates that are out there. And if you read the articles, it makes you lead to believe that they knew people were in these, they're squatting in some of these places. To me, it's their responsibility to let us know, or let the police know, or whatever, to get them out. Because what we don't want is, in this case, we didn't know how many people were in there. I mean, we could have lost ten people or whatever. And then secondly, we don't want our firefighters to roll in and, you know, have to, they're guessing, so they're trying to go in and out. That's how we get people hurt or killed. And to me, it's their responsibility to let us know about when they know where people, if they're given bags or whatever and they're going there, they know people are squatting there. So that something can be addressed in those buildings. Now, we've got them all over town, where people are squatting in vacant buildings and that. And I don't think any ward is immune to it. But I don't know what the, you know, if we can have any type of rule or something, or what the requirement is for this. Because it is a very, very big concern. And I think this building definitely brought it forward. You know, and that was one of the things, last year during budget, I wanted more money for us to tear down vacant buildings, because these, the people get in and squat in them, they build a fire because they get cold, the building catches fire, our firefighters have to come in, and then they go in to try to help them. And some of these buildings are not, there's no way they can be rehabbed. So, and I think this goodwill building is one of. So I'm just concerned about that.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Alderman Hanauer. One thing I would like to commend Public Works about is, a lot of times, some of the neighbors will tell me when they see open doors, kicked indoors, and they go right back out and board them up. And I just don't understand how we, the article did say it was some homeless people in that building. Is there something that, I know Ralph just asked this, but can you bring something to City Council or send us an email about the demo list of what's on there and how long before some of these buildings come up that will be getting tore down? Just so we can know where things are. I don't know if that's Public Works or if that's a question for Circle, which one?
Yeah, that would be, it's truly a combination.
Okay.
In the case of Goodwill, I don't think that those buildings were six-pointed, meaning that they were eligible for demolition. And the Public Works may be able to address that in part, but a vacant building by itself is not, if it's not structurally unsound, is not subject, you know, to demolition.
First of all, I'd like to say it's been a collaborative effort. The Springfield Police Department, Mayor's Office, and many others praised their efforts because that building was brought to our attention on certification. We boarded that building, as you know, Alderman Purchase, several times. Wanted to go back several times more, with no trespassing police signs after we boarded them. And then somehow they're vandalized again. And as we entry into the buildings, the Police Department has done a yeoman's job of bringing it to our attention, working in concert with them. But again, you cannot stop the will of some individuals. Unless you have twenty-four-hour surveillance on one particular building. As you know, we have this situation throughout the city, and I want to applaud the city and applaud the Mayor's Office and also the Police Department and the Fire Department. Chief Law brought it to my attention. Immediately, we had a crew out there to take care of the excavating as soon as possible. You know, those were the worst conditions ever. So I applaud the Fire Department, again, bravery. And they had no problem being out there in the freezing, sub-zero cold, taking care of fire that I believe started with some type of wood, whatever, being burned in a particular facility. Yes, it's a concern for everybody throughout the whole community that we board those communities, these buildings, we have done the yeoman's job in doing so. But again, it's over and over and over and over again. And the police resources is just stressed. I mean, you can only do so much. But this was not a situation where we weren't aware of it. We were. It was properly boarded several times. No trespassing signs was placed. Well, the police have done a great job of letting us know when people are there. And we took care of it. And when the problem came exist, we were right on the spot. Thanks for phone calls with the mayor who kept us abreast and stuff on it, about the concern of the people. Because my mindset was, building is one thing, but we're talking about human lives.
Exactly.
That's what I was concerned about. I know that's what the mayor was concerned about, compassionate about. There are any fatalities. That's what I was concerned about, no matter if they're homeless or not. That's a person, that's a soul. And that's what I think about each and every day. So we do everything we possibly can, work with our partners at the Police Department and the Fire Department, to try and address these things.
Thank you, Director Harris. And again, I do commend you all, because I know that you've been out in Lincoln Park three times, because the boards keep coming off the house. And we're in that type of temperature right now. We're always saying the email, I don't want some guests to go in there and start a fire, and now you've got multiple houses catching fire from it. Is there some, I know that we have policies in place that says we have so many days to allow that homeowner or whoever owns the property to get back to us, but maybe we should look at tightening them up just a little bit, too, so that it doesn't give so much time?
We do because it's the property owners have to contact the property owner. When the property owner does not act in time, we do. And then those charges didn't place on the property owner to pay those fines in particular, for what it cost us to board those particular facilities. So again, we have to do what is prudent and make sure we follow the legalities and stuff up as well. We just can't arbitrarily just do it. So we try to contact the owner. When we can't contact the owner, we immediately go out there and board his property, as you're well aware of, Alderman Purchase.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Real quickly, we did pass an ordinance to drop our vacant housing down from a year, from three years to a year, to sort of try to tighten this thing up. But I would be interested in really working with Alderman Hanauer and yourself to really come up with some funding in this year's budgets to attack more of these buildings that we own. We don't own a lot of them. And, you know, from my experience working on this, it takes a good, long while for us to get possession of them. And that's oftentimes the issue that slows us down. I deal with this quite a bit in my ward. But I am interested in really, you know, Alderman Hanauer, figuring out something budget-wise to really, really attack our most prioritized priority buildings, you know, the ones that really need to come down fast, if we can get, you know, possession of them. That's always the key. So I'm in agreement.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Harris. And I will reiterate, these are not always buildings that can be on the demo list. Public Works gets frequent contacts from me about a fairly large apartment complex in Ward Eight on Washington Street, where, you know, and you guys have been great responding. The Police Department has been fabulous in getting out there. But we have people, and I think this is kind of to Alderman Hanauer's point, there are people staying in places throughout the city, refusing to go to the shelters that we are trying to, you know, trying to build up, trying to fund more adequately. I think, what, five or six years ago, we were putting twenty-five thousand dollars a year towards our winter overnight shelter. We've extended it, we've expanded it. And yet still, we have situations where people are continuing to put themselves in harm's way. We know that's not people who are making their best decisions. Very much looking forward next week, Josh, to the Continuum's presentation. I know the Continuum, as a guiding force, has been very active in this. Helping Hands is expanding their services, trying yet again to put something really productive and going to the heart of the problem in our community, yes. You know, I'm hopeful that they're going to bring a new focus with new resources out at the south end of town. I just, we really need to have a more coordinated approach among citizens in this community to keep an eye on these vacant buildings, too. Because they're not all demo buildings, they're not all things. And Public Works can chase after them all day long. I'm fortunate, I've got neighbors in Ward Eight. I get a phone call or a text every time they see someone going into those apartments across from SHG and, you know, working with the new owners. But this is a problem throughout the city, and we need to remember, we can't just demo everything. I mean, that's part of what we're trying to do, is also to make sure that we're providing more viable housing. And, you know, it's not just a, let's demo more buildings or let's create more shelters, because clearly, we had a well-funded overnight shelter right now. As Alderman McMenamin detailed, there are services that are being provided there. I am concerned that the mental health services, I've not seen those included in reports recently. And I think we know, we've had this conversation multiple times. It's obviously, you know, part of the tools, part of the tools that need to be in the kit as we address this. I just really hope that we, as a community, are looking out for our neighbors. Mr. Harris said it, we're talking about human beings and human lives who unfortunately, through making very, very poor decisions, put our police, put our fire department, put our citizens in a place of danger, too. Chief, I saw that picture of your fire truck covered in ice. I am glad I was not hired to detail that truck. And it was really dangerously cold, let alone just to be out in those conditions. We've talked about this, we talk about this all the time. And it's a frustrating thing, and this community is not the only community that faces it. It's a national issue. And, but I am hopeful for next week that we're going to get a presentation that is a coordination from our agencies that are striving to address this and that we can be a little more aggressive and a little more forward pressing in making sure that we're not enabling people to stay in a place that's unsafe, that is, that puts them at risk and puts the rest of our community at risk. That was, Chief, what, one of the largest fires we've had in the city of Springfield?
Since nineteen seventy.
That could have spread all over the place. And there are more people who live in that part of town, and they were at risk, too. So we just, yeah, looking forward to the presentation next week, but very much concerned that we need to make sure that we're not part of enabling people to stay in places that they shouldn't be in.
Thank you. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to all my colleagues, those are so, these comments are so important. You know, I know it's a complicated issue when you're dealing with vacant properties and the homeless. So I know the night that it was extremely dangerously cold. Actually, I got lucky, I thought it would be Pillsbury this, and it wasn't. You know, I think so much attention had been on Pillsbury, and we had recently had a press conference, and we actually got, you know, some backhoes and things around that they just ignored it. But they did hit popular place, they did untake the wood off and go in. And even my complainers kind of said, well, Alderman, leave alone, it's just, it's just way too cold tonight. And when you get those kind of calls and you think about it and you react, and then you do think about the police and the fire, and you say, well, is it worth it? Why don't we just wait till the next day and maybe the temperature will go back up and they'll come back out? Because who knows what you'll find in popular place? But what got me through it, Mayor, was knowing that next month, we start the popular place. And it'd become like Pillsbury, to be too much attention around it that they won't run. What I do worry about is all those individuals. Where are they going to go when all these places are tore down? Or rehabbed or whatever goes on? Because it's common knowledge, you can name the twelve to fifteen people right now, you can ask the chief, we know who they are. They live there in Goodwill. That's where they live, at least in their minds. That's where I live, here's who I am, and here's who's missing, here's who I need to find. That is one area where two, three, and five come together, right there at their corner. And all three wards, so probably all three of us get the phone calls. And what I will say, I will commend all departments, because I think Public Works pretty much works the hardest, because they deal with it every day, about in and outs, boarded up, oh, they took the boards down, you got to board it back up, you know, that kind of thing, versus, oh, that's private, this is city. I mean, it's so many complicated issues involved with this situation we're dealing with, when people decide, it's so cold out that I'm going to take the boards down and go on the inside. My latest incident was the basement of a church. The church was just closed, but they had a long time ago boarded the bottom of their church so that people wouldn't go in. And then they went in. But, you know, the pastor's like, well, we're going to deal with it this time, because it never gets that kind of cold we had a couple nights ago, we just hadn't had for a long time. So I commend everybody in the administration, everybody around the horseshoe and Continuum of Care and all, because we're at least alerted and we're aware and we're trying to work through it. But I do think it starts with doing something with these abandoned buildings, if we could ever. And I'm hoping to hear in the report how we get to why the individuals won't go inside, what are we doing with those types of individuals? Alderman Conley had a right chair when she said, for sure, we have a good winter warming going on right now, they're just refusing to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, do you wish to summarize?
Chief doesn't want to come up ever.
You look nice, too, out of uniform.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I don't know if wish is the right word. Our people did do a phenomenal job there that night. It is a problem that we've discussed, and this isn't exactly in my lane, but unfortunately, it swerves into it from time to time, is that there are places in town, obviously, that people, when they have nowhere else to go, they're going to do what they have to do. And in this case, it didn't work out well. For our people, what I worry about as the person in charge of the Fire Department is that my people are safe, that to Alderman Hanauer's point and several others, when this happens, we do a great job as a community of offering places for people to go. Unfortunately, that's not what everybody wants to do. I don't know what the answer is. But a lot of departments and a lot of people sitting in this room did a lot of work that day. Our people appreciate it. Everyone reached out. I've told my people that most of you have wished them, you know, thanks and for their hard work. But I don't know, from our perspective, sometimes we know that people are in places and sometimes we don't. Sometimes they're there and sometimes they're not. I mean, it's one of those things where just because you think that people may be in a building, doesn't mean that they're there all the time. Sometimes they're there, sometimes they crash with a friend, sometimes they do go to a shelter. We interact with them a lot. But our folks did a great job the other night. It was horrific conditions, but I do appreciate everybody's support here. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Jim.
Chair, I did have one. So they, everybody is accountable for that you know?
As of a couple hours ago, we found the last two people actually sitting in the library. Thank you, Summer, sitting in the library. Our investigators at Kany's, people in fire safety, did a really good job of tracking down people that we didn't even have names, we had descriptions, we had street names, we had not real hard things to go on, and they tracked down the last two that we know of. That doesn't mean that we, that they're, that when we bring the dogs in on Thursday morning, Thursday morning, to search that, that we may not have some bad news. But as of right now, everybody that we knew of, that they said were within that building, we have accounted for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'd just like to say that this was a collaborative effort by all the departments in the city of Springfield. Public Works stepped up and brought in equipment to help move things around. CWLP obviously was involved because of utilities that might be in that building or whatever. But, you know, people think, don't understand how difficult it is to be a first responder, in not just Springfield, but everywhere you go. The bottom line is that being a first responder is really tough. But in these situations, when everybody else can go home and get warm and get out of the cold, these guys go out. So when the bad stuff happens, the police, the fire, the Public Works, the utilities, go out. So got to remember that. So, thank you. utilities, go out, so we gotta remember that, so, thank you. Any other unfinished business? Any new business come for the committee? Mr. Mayor, do you want to talk about the ward meeting situation?
Well, no, I'm not gonna talk about the ward meetings, but I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and see you in 2023.
Thank you. Did you want to talk about the ward meeting, sir?
I love all the women, DeSensio wants to go first.
Oh, I'll go first. You know, Mayor, I have made my thoughts on this very clear to you, I think we're extremely close to an election, we're in a new map, I think that there are several alderpeople that will have to attend more than one ward meeting if they're gonna cover their new maps. For those of us that are departing the council, it's not a big deal, it's one night, January is not ideal, it's a pretty packed up month, so, you know, I'm just making my thoughts known that we should have done these when we usually do these, which is September, October, November, the only off year that we did them in the summer was because of COVID, and that was in 2021, so the timing of these, to me, is not the most ideal.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, there's pluses and minuses to whatever timing approach one wants to take for this. I, I got my location set up today for Ward Seven, and correct, it's, it's the new Ward Seven, so we're gonna be inviting some folks that have not participated in Ward Seven, we tried to set a location that, and, to accommodate those two, three new precincts. I, you know, I'm gonna invite both candidates that are running in Ward Seven, it's an opportunity for them to hear firsthand what comments might be made from Ward Seven residents, that, what's on their mind, I think, you know, that's the positive part of, of timing something like this closer to an election, so that we can hear what's on the minds of folks, close to when they're gonna go and make a, a choice among candidates, so I'm gonna try to take advantage of it, look at it in a positive light, and I'm gonna put the word out that if you're in old Ward Seven, go to Ward Six, or go to Ward Eight, but if you're in new Ward Seven, you know, come to the meeting on January 11th at Parkway Church, right along, well, Ralph is familiar with it, that's where we had a neighborhood association meeting a couple of months ago.
Boulevard.
That's right, the, what Boulevard?
Lindbergh.
So it's in the intersection of Lindbergh and, and Westchester, right there, so, and we'll be getting the word out, right, Mr. Mayor, that the communications department will put out information about when these meetings will be taking place, and give everyone an opportunity to attend if they wish to.
Mayor Langford.
Yeah, just to give a note, overview for everybody in the audience, and beyond, the, we schedule the ward plan meetings, or put out dates yesterday, and, you know, some council members, you know, express their opinion one way or the other, but the importance of them is just to get feedback on the budget, and that's what we'll adhere to, is the budget, you know, related to the corporate fund, or ARPA funds, how they're going to be planned for disbursement, that's, you know, subject to change, but the one thing they, we don't want it to turn into, or won't allow it to turn into, and it's been raised, as expressed by Alderman DeSensio and others, it can't be a political event, that's why we kind of didn't do it in November this year, because we did have public forums where it's circling petitions during the city's time, and people were out there, so we wanted to prevent that from happening, and so the moderator will, of course, you know, be aware of that, and make sure that doesn't happen, especially with the time we're in, but, you know, that's, I think it's important to get the public feedback, and then we can all take in that information, and as we go through the budget hearings here, make a determination of how to prioritize the funds.
Alderman Connelly.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Mayor, I just want to point out, and I did have concerns, obviously, we, we talked, and I appreciate your response, so the last, at the meeting that we held in 2021, one of the things that I did for Ward Eight was to take the notes from the prior year meeting, put them in a table, I, and give the hand of those out to my constituents as they came to the meeting, just to kind of have that continuity of issues that had been raised at prior meetings, what's the status of, of addressing those, those issues and concerns, so that we could also help to focus and, and formulate the discussion for the, that, that ward meeting. I, I would ask that we have that for all of the wards, all of the issues that were raised in prior meetings and prior years, so that people can track what's been said in the past, and, and where we are, you know, with moving forward and making progress on those, those issues and concerns. I, I can just say, for a number of the ones in Ward Eight, unfortunately, we've, we've not been able to make a lot of progress, quite a few of them, Police Department, a lot of people wanted you to slow down speeders, so if you could, if you could get that going, and I know you have, and I will say, obviously, we've been dealing with speeding all over the place, we do have new classes being hired, I'm optimistic that, that having more officers on the street will make a difference, but those, those crime issues, those, those safety concerns, there are a number of issues that, that came up in these ward meetings in the past, and, and every single ward has these, I believe they're still on the website, although I didn't have a chance to look before I came in tonight, but just if we could all have those for our meetings, it's a handy guide for people to see what the raise, what the issues were raised in the past, what people were concerned with, I think it's an interesting perspective to take a picture on in 2019, what were people worried about, and how does that compare to where we are in 2023, when we'll be holding these next meetings. So if we could certainly have that for everyone, just to, I think that could be useful, too. And again, you know, like to make sure none of the ward meetings overlap with, with budget hearings, because it looks like we might be running up tight on that schedule. I'm one of the people who's going to be going to, I would think, at least three meetings, because Ward Eight will take portions of Ward Six, portions of, of the old Ward Seven. Alderman McMenamin, I appreciate you trying to, you know, kind of corral the new ward into the new location, but I have plenty of experience of knocking on doors in the new boundaries for Ward Eight, and people were adamant that they were in Ward Six, so they were in Ward Seven, so I got to disappoint them all, hopefully not for too long. So I think we're going to see people showing up, and what, what their existing ward is for that meeting, and I think it's important, for me, I will do my best to be at, at the Ward Six and Ward Seven meetings, to make sure that I can also hear those concerns, and make sure that I'm, you know, able to represent people to the best of my ability. It is difficult for us, people who, on the council, who also have full-time jobs and are scheduling for these budget hearing meetings, puts a lot on our plates, not that I don't enjoy that, I, I've been accused of having it over full plate a lot, and I'm okay with that, I, I just, a little concerned about our ability to actually rapidly respond to issues that are raised in January for a budget that has to be adopted really early February, so, that said, if nothing else, if we could just have summaries of the issues and concerns that have been raised in the past ward meetings and progress on those, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
And have ten actual dates available for meetings.
Sure. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, all politics aside, I, I, I really look forward to, to the ward meeting, and I think that's an excellent idea to have the things that we talked about comparison to where we are, you know, we've done a, a lot on the east side, and particularly on Ward Two, and, you know, I've been encouraging both, both my new, and I didn't lose too much, but I've been encouraging people, especially people I know out west, to come to, to our ward meetings, so they can hear the, the voices of our community, so when I'm up here wrestling for this stuff, it's not foreign, or it's not, you know, like, like it's just me, or, or, or unneeded, and, and I try to go to others, I, I believe I attended all the woman purchases last year, and I try to get around it, because I want to hear, I want to hear what's important, I wore ten, and wore nine, and eight, and on, and on, and on, I want to hear those things, too, because I have to come up here and vote, and make an educated decision, so, you know, I, I, I think I like the name Ward Meetings, Mr. Mayor, but I, I, I think this, this, the, you know, these have to be in a mindset of a regular community meeting, because it's gonna take all ten of us, whoever's gonna be sitting up here, whoever's gonna be sitting in that seat, to really get this done, and, you know, up here is where we handle the people's business, and that's all I want to do. Thank you.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yeah, I think there's only four aldermen that were here eight years ago when you started these meetings, Mayor, I think it's, no previous mayor has had these town hall meetings, I think it's a real plus for our city, I think this will be our seventh round in eight years of having these town hall meetings, I think we went light during COVID, and I think it's, I think it's appropriate, since you're initiating the meetings, you can set the, kind of the agenda, or the focus, I think budget is a good focus, I don't think, you know, one hour, you can, you know, sometimes you have people show up that want to just, you know, take over the floor for a while with their own particular unique issue, so I think it's good to have a focus, and when we talked today, I mentioned a couple of budget issues that I thought would come up in, at our meeting, where, you know, we have to decide, we got the highest cash balance in the city's history right now, in our general corporate fund, and that high cash balance won't stay around forever, so we've got to be strategic and selective the way we spend that money, so I think it's appropriate to have a focus on the budget, right before we're gonna make some budget decisions, so we can kind of hear what people are thinking about the budget, where we want to expand a program, or maybe contract a program, so I don't have any problem, Mayor, with you providing a focus for these meetings, I think, I can, you know, and we can come back to all the other issues, maybe in a different way, maybe an alderman can have their own meeting, where they want to just focus on some ward-specific issues, so that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. I think that, you know, I, I like having the ward meetings, I think, I do agree that, that this is kind of, what we should have had them was before you guys did the budget, because, you know, no one has talked to me about what my priorities for the ward is. I, I'm out in my ward, we all are out in our ward, we should know what the priorities in the ward is, and, I mean, I've had it to where we had a, had a ward meeting, and people from one particular neighborhood came, and yelled the loudest, and all of a sudden, things got jumped over on priorities of the ward. I don't think it should be a situation like that, where, you know, if, if, I don't know, if one neighborhood comes, and, and they, they scream that they want something done, and that, that jumps over everything else, you know, you know, having said that, I, I think that, I think that if, if we're gonna do it, you know, the budget, it's, we're, we're already starting budget hearings, and that's why, it, it, you know, I haven't seen what, what's in it yet, none of us have, or, you know, when are we planning on getting it, Bill, because, you know, I need time to look at it, and see what's, what, you know, what the plan is, because also, what happens a lot of times, I feel like the, you know, they try to push the narrative to whatever they want it to, to be, and I, I, I just, I, I think that we need to be consulted about what we think our pri, what our priorities for the ward is, and obviously, for, for the wards that, that are, you know, we're, we're losing people, you know, whoever gets in might have different priorities, and they may get in because of those different priorities that, that, that's coming up, and, and, that's just the, the issues I see, and I just would like to get the budget, so we know what, you know, because what, what's the priorities in the budget may not be the same priorities that, that we particularly want in our ward, so.
Any other discussion on this? Hearing none.
Don, Donlin.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Chair, I was a little late on the, the trigger here, but I, I did want to say just a couple of things about, about the meetings, and, you know, timing, I think it would have been, would have been better, I agree, if it would have been last year, but we're past last year. One of the things that I've noticed, and, you know, prior to COVID, we had periodic office hours with, with residents, and throughout the war, kind of moved the meetings around, and, and sometimes we'd have one person, sometimes there'd be multiple, and those have been advantageous, you know, personally met with over, walked neighborhoods throughout the last eight years, and, and, and just, just this year, hit, and spoke to over a thousand people personally, and, you know, get ideas from what's going on in particular in certain neighborhoods, but the ward meetings themselves, you get different perspectives, I think all of these things go together, I think all of these things are mechanisms to bring good ideas forward, sometimes those, sometimes people get a little vocal, I guess that's part of the fun, but I, I agree, the timing could have been different, but we're past that, I think we got to figure this out, and move forward, and do, do the best we can, but it's, it is concerning that we don't have the budget, and we're talking about, talking publicly about ways to, what the priorities are from the public, when, in fact, we haven't even seen the budget, or it's already, it has, it has to be, I know the process pretty well by now, it has to be 99.9% done, so, anyway, I guess we're, I guess we're focusing on amendments to the budget, not the actual budget, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Director McCarty.
To, to answer Alderman Hanauer's question, just to give you a preliminary schedule, right now, we're planning to have the budget books out to you all next week, on the sixth, which is a Friday, the ward meetings would commence over the next couple of weeks, we're looking at having the, this is all preliminary, by the way, up, up to you all, but we're looking at the first budget hearing on the 24th, so that would give you Alderman Hanauer two and a half weeks with the budget before the first hearing. We would then have the final three hearings, the last week of January, first week of February, you would then have a week, week and a half to get amendments in, we're looking at having those due on the 10th, so that we can, on the 14th, you can have your committee of the whole discussion on the budget, with passage on the 21st, and to Alderman, I think it was Connelly's point, if necessary, if the council would like more time, we can always push things back and have a special meeting, and pass it as late as Tuesday, the 28th, so certainly, we're, we're trying to spread things out more, we heard you last year, we heard some of the concerns, so we tried to put together a calendar that would give you plenty of time in between getting the books, the hearings, the ward meetings, and amendments.
Thank you. My, my biggest concern is that we've always had our, our, our meetings with Public Works in the fall, and we didn't have those this year, they're being moved to, being moved to right up on top of the budget, because I know where my priorities are in my ward, and I wanted to see what their priorities were, so we can compare those, so.
We've always had the meetings in January.
Yeah, infrastructure meetings, so that, that, I mean, that's another.
Well, it's way before the budget, though.
Yeah. And, and again, for those of us who have full-time jobs, it's an extremely busy month.
And I don't think they've always been in January, but.
Happy New Year, everybody.
I said it already, Happy New Year, see you in 2023.
And you know, here's the thing, if we don't get, come to a conclusion, we just don't vote for the budget.
It's poor time management, it's poor planning.
That's how we do it. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah.
All right, is there any citizens who want to address the committee?
None that have signed up, but we have one in the back that would like to.
April.
Good evening, all, my name is April Poole, I'm a resident of Springfield, 3061, Buena Vista Drive, Ward Four, proud member of Twin Lakes Home Association, and I am also the treasurer of the Coalition of Rainbow Alliances, which you all have packages, except for you, Mayor, which you received yours through the mail. We are thanking you for your support, whether it's just friendly of support, or whether it's monetary support, or showing up at our events, or letting us show up at some of your events and show our support for, for you, and whatever events you're having. We thank you for the year, and we look forward to what's going to happen in 2023. So I'm hearing all these dates about the budget meetings, and I'm going, hey, we have a gala, which is what those packets are about, and you guys can come and celebrate that you've passed a budget at our gala, and we'll gladly take your money and come and, and have a few drinks with you, and, you know, dance the night away.
Thank you for not scheduling that in January.
Yes. We used to schedule this at the end of February, so I'm really glad we've moved it back to the end of March. So yes, I have presented you all with proposals for sponsorship and advertising for our spring gala, it is called Together Building Community. Coral has done several events this year, helping Fifth Street Renaissance, helping the Phoenix Center, helping Habitat for Humanities, helping at, being at Juneteenth, being at several events, one in particular that just occurred Christmas Day, it also occurred on Thanksgiving Day, Coral, in conjunction with three churches, served nearly 200 meals to seniors. Day, Coral, in conjunction with three churches, served nearly 200 meals to seniors who are shut-ins that reside, that usually receive daily bread, meals on wheels, meals, but because they see no one on Thanksgiving or Christmas, Coral and three churches joined together, and we provided a hot, traditional holiday meal. Mr. Hanauer, who used to be my boss, knows fully well that I've done this for many years. And Coral was a, was a big sponsor of that this year. And we're just wanting to work with the community, to build relationship and build community together. So we look forward for your support in the new year. And as treasurer, my number is all over that packet. So come see me. Got any questions? Oh, the event is March 25th at the Crown Plaza. I hope to see you all there.
I will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, Mr. Chair, let's not forget the city boys and girls' basketball tournament in January.
Oh, good.
Does anyone have those days? We got, get our.
We're just piling on in January. We won't have a night off in January for anybody who wants to know. Anybody else? If not, entertain, entertain, oh, any executive committee?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thanks.